Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of examiners and appeals meeting for April 14th, 2022. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Savina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Andrew Romerdal. Brian Flynn.
Here.
Scott Myers.
Here.
Dave Hellis, excused. Do you have a quorum? Thank you.
Thank you. The... We would like to welcome two new members, Brian Flynn and Scott Myers. Glad to have you. Okay. Next order of business is minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, February 10th, 2022. May I have a positive motion, please? Positive motion by Mr. Romerdal, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next order of business is special order of business disclosures. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Romerdal.
Through the chair. So I was absent for the February 10th meeting when cases 2021-0083 and 2022-001 were initially heard, but have since listened to the audio and thus should be able to participate in tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Any other disclosures?
Madam Chair, I'd like to abstain from voting on the consent agenda as I was not a member of the board at that time.
Mr. Myers? Mr. Flynn?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to abstain from the consent agenda as I am a new member.
Are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, I would like to reorder the agenda and move the annual election of officers to the end. Could I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Could you speak to your motion, Mr. Quinn?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Smythe?
No comment.
Okay. Is there any objection to reordering? Seeing none, we'll move the election of officers to the end of the agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. All matters before the board that do not require a public hearing, it is taken as a whole with no discussion unless you want to remove a portion of it. There are two items on the consent agenda: Resolutions for Approval, Resolution 2022-001 and Resolution 2022-002. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe? And a second by Mr. Quinn. Any objection? Why, wait a minute. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? Any objection to approval of the consent agenda? The consent agenda is approved and will move on. Nothing on the agenda for appearance requests, unfinished business, or regular agenda, and that moves us to public hearings. First case is Case 2022-0014. So there is a regular procedure to be followed, and I'm to explain that. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. Both cases tonight, or three of the cases tonight are variances, so we don't have any approvals, and this will be the procedure. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. Then the board shall hear a brief presentation by the staff outlining the variance. On the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant then shall give his or her presentation. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve some of that time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. On conclusion, the applicant of the applicant's presentation, board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing then shall be open for public testimony. Representatives of group have five minutes, individuals have three minutes, and time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed and then turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, and then the board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions in writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. Concurrent of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused for conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. Then the parties will have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. Okay, so first case, Case 2022-0014. Michael Alexandra Osman are the petitioners. Will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice in this case?
Thank you, Chair. On February 16th, 2022, a total of 134 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with AMC 2103O20H. No public comments have been received, and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors provided a resolution of support.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to remove an existing deck north of the house and construct a second-story addition and attached garage south of the existing home. The garage has a vestibule that connects it with the existing home and will have deck space above it. The applicant is also proposing a hot tub and sauna on the eastern side of the property between the two streams. Plotting Case S 12579, remove the plot note regarding the stream easement that was in place before Code Incorporated's stream setback, and the non-conforming determination for the existing home encroachment is found in Attachment 5. This is a request for four variances from AMC 2107O20B9B that will all be decided upon separately. The request is to allow the following additions to a single-family structure to encroach and require 25-foot stream setbacks as follows. Variance 1: Second story of residence to encroach in the stream setback to the east. Variance 2: Attached garage and vestibule to encroach into the stream setback to the east. Variance 3: Hot tub to encroach into both stream setbacks to the east and west. Variance 4: Sauna to encroach into the stream setback to the east. The following standards must be substantially met. Standard A is met for all variance requests. Due to the two streams, the buildable lot of the area is just over 3,000 square feet or 20% of the lot. Similar lots throughout the municipality have greater buildable areas, and the existence of the two streams pose an exceptional physical circumstance of the property. The colored plot plan details the buildable area with the red area being the only areas not within a setback. Standard B is met for Variance 1 and 2, the second-story addition in the garage. The existing residence was constructed prior to the 25-foot stream setback requirement. Strict application of this code creates an undue hardship prohibiting any addition to the existing structure. Second stories and garages are features commonly enjoyed by other properties within this zoning district and the surrounding neighborhood. The majority of the garage is not within the setback and only a small portion encroaches a stream setback. Standard B is not met for Variance 3 and 4, the hot tub and shed. Hot tubs and saunas are not commonly enjoyed, and strict application of this code does not deprive the applicant. The proposed location of these structures is between the two streams and will require additional bridge access for the structures in addition to construction of the two structures. The applicant has not demonstrated that there are no conforming alternatives such as within the existing dwelling unit or proposed additions such as on the proposed deck. Standard C is met for Variance 1 and 2. The location of the existing single-story dwelling is an illegally non-conforming location, and the hardship is not self-imposed. The proposed addition does not increase the encroachment of the structure into the stream setback, and there are no conforming alternatives for the additions. Standard C is not met for Variance 3 and 4, hot tub and shed. The applicant has not demonstrated that the location of these structures and the encroachment into the stream setback is not merely an inconvenience. Standard D is met for all four variance requests. Given the character, history, and zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear that granting of these variances will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The encroachment does not extend into any right-of-way. Standard E is met for all variances. The requested variance will not change the character of the GR2 zoning district. Standard F is met for Variance 1 and 2, the second story and garage. It does not appear that these encroachments will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of the people of the municipality. While the existing home currently encroaches into the 25-foot stream setback, the second story will not further the encroachment. The proposed garage is adjacent to the existing dwelling unit, and only a small portion of the structure encroaches into the stream setback. Standard F is not met for Variance 3 and 4, hot tub and shed. The location of the hot tub encroaches into both stream setbacks to the east and west, and the sauna encroaches in the setback to the east. In addition to the placement of these structures, a bridge is required to access them and will require clearing and groundwork for the construction of both hot tub and shed, resulting in more disturbance within these setback areas negatively affecting the environmentally sensitive areas. Standard G is met for all four variances. The standard is not applicable to single-family homes. Standard H is met for Variance 1 and 2, second-story addition and garage. The variance request for the second story and existing second story of the existing dwelling unit and attached garage are minimum variances required to make reasonable use of the land. The existing structure encroaches into the setback prior to the requirement by code and has legal and non-conforming rights for the encroachment. The existing home does not have a garage, a feature commonly enjoyed throughout the municipality and within the neighborhood. The garage itself does not encroach into the stream setback, but the vestibule space that connects it to the existing home does, which is a minimal encroachment. Standard H is not met for Variance 3 and 4, hot tub and shed. The applicant has not demonstrated that there are no conforming alternatives to the proposed hot tub and shed. There are conforming locations to the west of the existing dwelling, and the structures could be placed within the home or on the deck of the proposed garage, which exceeds 600 square feet. The department finds that Standards A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H are met for variances 1 and 2, the second-story addition and garage. Standards A, D, E, and G are met, and Standards B, C, F, and H are not met for variances 3 and 4, the hot tub and garage. Therefore, the department recommends approval of variances 1 and 2 and denial of variances 3 and 4. If after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to Condition 2 on Page 7, which details the amount of encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, through the chair. Can you remind myself and the board what the conditions for being within the stream setback for structures are, the hot tub, and specifically the sauna? Is there a requirement for a foundation, or is it any structure exists within that setback? Is there a detail there?
Thank you. Through the chair, structures, permanent foundation or not, are not permitted in a stream site setback. So the only thing that could be utilized within a stream setback is having it be like yard space and natural open space. I'm not sure if these structures would require a permanent foundation, but I think the applicant might be able to answer that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant?
Hi there. This is Michael Osman, Alexander Robinson on the phone. Sorry, our connection's a little bit rough. We don't have any questions of the staff at this point regarding the presentation.
Thank you. Then, I know you just introduced yourself, but will you please state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, Michael Osman and Alexander Robinson here, 515 Bayle, Girdwood Drive, Bayle Drive, Girdwood, Alaska.
Thank you. Will you please present your case?
Yes, so thanks again to Carly for outlining the information. We have had numerous conversations with Carly and her staff. At this point, we are electing to rescind our original request for consideration of variances 3 and 4 for the hot tub and sauna. That's as a result of meetings and conversations with other community members here throughout Girdwood, members of the watershed management staff, and our own research that has since, in the last five months or so, has allowed us to pursue other options and obtain better information about the process. We agree with the recommendations presented by the planning department to pursue approval for the addition in garage variances number 1 and 2, and we have no further comments on this at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then the hearing is open for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in Case 2022-0014? Anyone at all? We'll move on. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
And the applicant, do you have anything additional to add?
We do not.
Okay. Then the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? And we're going to take variance 1 and 2 separately, so it would be for variance number 1. Moved by Ms. Savina, would you state your motion, please?
In Case 2022-0014, I move to approve a variance from AMC 21.07.O20B9.B to allow second-story residence to encroach 22 feet 4 inches into a required 25-foot Western Creek setback subject to Condition 2, shown on Page 7 of the staff report.
And Mr. Smythe seconds. Mr. Smythe, do you have anything?
I'd just like to say I agree with the staff's findings on all the points, and specifically for 1 and 2 only.
I guess I didn't ask Ms. Savina for...
It's okay.
Go ahead.
I agree with staff on all their recommendation.
Thank you. Then I guess we're... Anyone else have anything to add to... Okay, it's unanimous, seven yes votes, so the variance number 1 passes, and we'll move on to variance number 2. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Romerdal, will you state your motion?
Sure. In Case 2022-0014, I move to approve a variance from AMC 21.07.020B.9-B, or dot B, sorry, to allow an attached garage to encroach 18 feet 1 inch into the required 25-foot Western Creek setback subject to Condition 2, shown on Page 7 of the staff report.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Smythe. Mr. Romerdal, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, I intend to support my motion in agreeance with staff comments as well as testimony by the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I also intend to support my motion for the same reasons.
Any other discussion from the board members? Seeing none, we'll vote. And that passes, seven yes votes, no no votes, so the variance passes, and we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, Case 2021-0082. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
On March... Yes, Madam Chair. On March 16th, 2022, a total of 203 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103O20H. As of this writing, one public comment was received. This is included in Attachment 3, which is Page 31 of your packet. The Sand Lake Community Council did not provide comments on this case.
Is there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, we'll move on. Will the staff please present the case?
Yes, Madam Chair. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from the side setbacks of the interior lot line common to Lot 18 and Lot 19 to add an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, within the existing footprint above the garage of the home. The Anchorage 2020 Anchorage Bowl Comprehensive Plan and the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan support the need for alternative affordable housing types like accessory dwelling units. Policies 16 and 58 of the Anchorage 2020 call for the adoption of standards that provides a variety of lot sizes and housing types and encourages more affordable housing for low-income residents. The 2040 Land Use Plan supplements Anchorage 2020 with updated forecasts of future housing needs and more specific land use guidance. It identifies a need for up to 21,000 additional residential units and a more diverse housing supply with a greater number of compact housing units, including accessory dwellings. The 2040 Land Use Plan targets an additional 1,000 new ADUs in the Anchorage Bowl by the year 2040. The existing home was constructed in 1960 in its current location, crossing the common lot line between Lot 18 and Lot 19. To sell or dispose of either Lot 18 or Lot 19 at this time would require the removal of the existing home. In effect, these two lots are bound with this home located on both. The current owner and applicant purchased the home in 1995 and have since made major and minor repairs and updates to the home. These repair and updates were done in accordance with municipal code, and permits were acquired from Development Services. These previous permits did not speak to the need to remediate the issue of the existing home crossing property lines. The latest permit, R 21-1400, with the addition of an ADU above the existing garage and repairs and updates to the existing home brought this non-conforming issue to light. These lots were combined into one economic parcel by the Municipality of Anchorage Property Appraisal Division Municipal Assessor in May of 2000. In order to approve the variance, the applicant must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following standards. Standard A is met. The existing home spans lots 18 and 19. This home was constructed in 1960 in this location and is assumed to be legally non-conforming. The Municipality of Anchorage Property Appraisal Division views these lots as one economic parcel. Standard B is met. Effectively, the two lots act as one and have been used this way since the home was constructed. Standard C is met. This hardship is not self-imposed. The applicant purchased this property as is in 1995 without knowledge of the existing home spanning two lots. These lots cannot be sold or disposed of in this current configuration without the removal of the existing home. The 2020 and 2040 Land Use Plans speak to a desire to develop ADUs in Anchorage. This property is attempting to develop as per the adopted plans. Standard D is met. The proposed addition above the existing garage will not increase the footprint of the current structure. The location of this home has not affected any of the adjacent properties for the last 60 years. Standard E is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R1 zoning district in which the petition site is located. The R1 district is intended primarily for detached, single-family residential areas with gross densities up to five dwelling units per acre. These areas generally are intended to have well-developed infrastructure and municipal services generally are intended to be provided. Granting this variance to encroach within the setback will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under the Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21. Standard F is met. There are no identified health or safety issues with this property. This ADU will provide additional housing that could potentially improve the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality referenced in the code on Page 5 of your packet. Standard G is met. The standard does not apply to a single-family residence. Standard H is met. Construction of the ADU above the existing garage footprint reduces the impact on this parcel by maintaining the existing footprint of the home and garage. There's no additional impact to the remainder of this property. Therefore, the department recommends approval of this variance subject to Conditions 1 and 2. If after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met for all variance requests, then the approval should be subject to Conditions 1 and 2 on Page 6 of your staff packet. The applicant is on the phone to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Smythe?
Thank you. Through the chair, so help me clarify again. This is on existing foundation. The footprint of the building is not going to change, so outside of this ADU, the owner would need to apply for a variance for the setback, for intruding into the setback regardless, correct?
Through the chair, Mr. Smythe. So prior to... If you look at your packet on Page 14, prior to this, accessory dwelling units were not allowed to apply for variances, and so when the... But yes, sorry. Yes, the existing, the new ADU exists on top of the, will be placed on the existing foundation of the garage, so it's not expanding over that existing foundation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board to the staff? Okay. Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So will the applicant please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Diane Kaplan. It's D.I.A.N.E.K.A.P.L.A.N. I live at 7032 Whitehall Street.
Thank you. Please present your case.
After... Thank you, Madam Chair. After settling my husband's estate, he died in December of 2019, I began working on a remodel to address some damage to my garage and basement, and the contractor indicated that it could be possible to add an ADU on top of the garage. I was very aware that the municipality had revised its zoning code to encourage the building of ADUs to create needed affordable housing for the community, and through my professional work, I've been involved in addressing the housing shortage in the municipality in recent years, so it seemed to be worth considering. And I could also anticipate a time when I could need this for my own family use. I have an elderly mother who might want to relocate, and also if I'm away, I'm pretty close to retirement in a little over a year, someone to be on site to watch my property. So I engaged an architect, and we did the design. It's a 600 square foot, fully usable apartment. It's small, but very functional, and I think it will create a unit that's very much in line with what the municipality was hoping to create. I was not aware of the issue with the lot line, and that came as a surprise, and... I was not aware of the issue with the lot line, and that came as a surprise, and the cost of having to do the replating was what caused me to contact the department and find out if I could get a variance. I then learned, I had a hearing set for August, and the day of the hearing, it was postponed because the knowledge came forward that variances were not allowed for ADUs, so it was rescheduled for today after that had, that was corrected. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Case 2021-0082? Come forward, please.
I just have a question.
State, state, state your name for the record, please. Would you turn your microphone on? Yep, that's it, okay.
My name is Paul Hedlow.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yeah, H.E.A.D.L.O.U.G.H.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
I just wanted to ask if they're building anything other than what, what's already built above the garage, if they're planning on coming out further towards the fence, or is what they've done, is that it? Because that, that's right there in my, in my backyard, so I was just curious if they're, if they're trying to encroach even further than what's already done, or if that's...
Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There are no other plans to do any other renovations to the house after this is complete? Thank you.
That didn't answer, that didn't answer. I mean, what they have, what they have done above the garage, that's all they're doing? They're not, no other footings? They're, they're not doing any other footings or anything?
Madam Chair, I can answer that. So the existing structure that is there is what's there. There is no additional footprint area. There's no other footings or any extension of the existing structure from what's existing there.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, that's all, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to testify in case 2021-0082? Anyone at all? Does the staff have any rebuttal?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Do you have anything additional you'd like to add?
I don't, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe, will you state your motion?
Yeah, I move that in case 2021-082 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020, Table 26.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow an accessory dwelling unit to encroach into the side setback, subject to conditions one and two, shown on page six of the staff report.
Thank you, seconded by Ms. Sabina. Mr. Smythe, will you speak to your motion, please?
I will. I do intend to support the motion, again, to keep it straightforward and simple. I agree with staff's findings on all eight points. Outside of the benefits of ADU, I think if this, as we've seen in other cases like this, if they were attempting to sell this or some other reason, this condition of the setback would have been brought up to the board, we'd be approving it for a standard dimensional variance. So I see no reason to have the ADU as even part of it, but I do support it, so I intend to support this motion.
Ms. Sabina?
I intend to support my motions, or motion based on the department's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments bottom of the board? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, we're easy today. Again, it's unanimous and the variance passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Moving on, case 2022-0039. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On March 16th, 2022, a total of 134 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with procedures of AMC 21-03-02-0H.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, we'll move on. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. This is a request for a variance from R1A District Regulations to permit a structure to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30%. The request is to allow a maximum lot coverage of 39.7%. The petition site is a 12,236 square foot lot with a two-story, single-family house and attached garage. The existing lot is 45% greater than the minimum lot size of 8,400 square feet in the R1A district, and the petitioner would like to build an airplane hangar as an attached accessory structure on the side of the house to allow for safe plane access to the airstrip. This residential lot is adjacent to the Flying Crown airstrip, and the Flying Crown subdivision is an aviation community developed to accommodate aircraft owners and provide a safe, maintained airstrip for their use. This is a reasonable and safe access point for aircraft originating from the subject parcel to access the adjacent airstrip. In the findings of the standards, staff found standard A is not met. The variance does not arise from the physical conditions of the land, such as creeks, wetlands, steep slope, et cetera, which are peculiar to land and which would have limited the ability to construct within the requirements on the lot. However, this is an FAA-registered airstrip within the subdivision, and it is intended to be an aviation-oriented community. And while weather is not a physical circumstance, it is something to be considered for this requested variance. The applicant's narrative speaks to the changing weather environment and frequent heavy wind events that occur, and the need for a safe, protective interior space for the owner's aircrafts in the winter city environment as an alternative to being tied off outside. Standard B, staff found that that condition is not met. The lot is relatively flat, not affected by natural features such as streams and wetlands. The lot is roughly the same size or larger than many other lots in the same neighborhood. However, multiple variances have been approved for hangers on lots in the same neighborhood, and the owner points out that the nearby R2A zoning district allows 40% lot coverage, whereas the R1A district in which the petition site is located only allows 30% lot coverage. If we take a look at some of the maps, you'll notice that half of the airstrip is zone R2A, which would allow that 40% lot coverage, and the other half, which he's in, is zone R1A. The petitioner's home is similar size when compared to homes with hangers in the same zoning district, and aircraft hangers are commonly enjoyed in the same neighborhood. Staff found condition C has not been met, as that speaks to the peculiarity of the lot that arises out of some natural or physical condition. There's no slopes, streams, or wetlands for that, on that lot. Staff found condition D, the standard is met. It does appear at the time that granting of the variance for a maximum lot coverage will not adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The proposed single-family home and attached airplane hangar does not extend beyond the property line and will not encumber adjoining property owners, nor will it encroach into any required setback. An aircraft hangar is a common amenity in the residential neighborhood, and there have been no objections from the neighborhood, and a letter of support of the variance was received from the neighbor. That can be found on page 29 of the staff packet. And as the petition notes in its submittal, the neighborhood is an aviation community with aircraft hangers and access to an airstrip. Condition E, staff finds that has been met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R1A zoning district. Granting this variance to exceed maximum lot coverage by 9.7% will not permit either principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. So it'll basically develop in a manner that's consistent with the intent and purpose of the R1A district. Staff finds condition F has been met. It will not aver, not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Allowing the single-family home and aircraft hangar to be constructed will allow the owner to store his airplanes in a protective manner from vandalism and inclement weather conditions while providing for safe passage of the homeowner's aircraft to and from the adjoining airstrip. Condition G, that standard's been met. Single-family homes are not subject to provisions of the American with Disabilities Act, and staff finds that condition H has been met as well. So this variance requests the minimum variance necessary to make reasonable use of the land for its intended use and is consistent with the intent of the subdivision as an aviation community. Placement of an attached aircraft hangar to a single-family home in this location will allow for the safekeeping of aircraft while still allowing access to the airstrip. If the proposed airplane hangar is the minimum size needed to build such a structure, then it's considered the minimum variance request. So with that, staff finds that standards D, E, F, G, and H are substantially met, and standards A, B, and C are not fully met. AMC Title 21 requires all eight standards to be substantially met for the variance to be granted, but after the public hearing, if the board finds all eight standards are met for dimensional variance, then the approval should be subject to conditions one and two, found on page six of the staff packet. I can answer any questions, and the property owner is here, along with their representative, and he probably can speak a little further to general aviation in Alaska and the, the need for a hangar. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Smythe?
I feel like I'm asking all the questions. Through the chair, Sean, can you explain the major differences between R1A and R2A? The applicant mentions that it's allowed 40% lot coverage. The general differences are for type of neighborhood, although you could not even tell by looking at this, the major differences. Could you?
No, it's really lot coverage. The setbacks are pretty much the same, minimum lot widths and minimum lot size. I think the minimum lot size might be a little bit different. Let me take a quick look here. The R2A actually allows a smaller lot size, so, and like we said, he's, his, this property's 45% greater than the minimum for the, for the R1, so he'd be even more over for the R2.
All right, thank you.
So I guess to note, that would be the, the, the R2 is a smaller minimum lot size but allows a higher lot coverage, whereas here you have a larger lot, and he's really equivalent to the same lot coverage.
Any other questions from the board to the staff? Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant? This is kind of an awkward, I mean, we haven't even...
No, there's no questions.
Okay, thank you. So, to come forward, will you please state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, my name's Ron Thompson. I'm with Scope Permitting and Engineering, and this is Matt Harper, the owner of the property.
Will you please present your case?
Sure. Two things, I did want to drop off a letter of support. There's more owners of the area. We couldn't get them in time to get them to them, but we have a letter that has four, five, six, seven, eight more owners in the area that are in support of, so I can provide that to Paul, or to Sean, if you'd like.
You need to give it to the secretary.
We'd like to just cover just the, the first three items, first, per se, for, with regard to the standard one, two, and three that were found not to be met. We feel that, just like many other variances in this neighborhood, the language and the wind and the problem with regard to, the, the language of the criteria doesn't fit this type of lot or, or the typical normal variance requests. In this case, the wind is a serious issue with airplanes being tied down, because even if they're tied down, and I'll let Matt explain it a little bit, they, they still can be damaged because they want to take off and fly when wind is going on, and so part of the thing is being, taking and making them safer, and part of making them safer is putting them in aside. So we tried to, and so if standard one was met based upon the physical attributes of the area, which is it's next to the railroad tracks, wind comes right through, and we feel that from previous cases and previous variances, one in, for instance, 2011-009, the board did find that the wind was a physical characteristic, and they agreed that it did substantially meet it. And then based upon that, they also approved that item two was substantially met because airplane hangers are a common right in enjoyment in this unique neighborhood. There's only like two neighborhoods in town that are on airstrips, and so it's kind of a very unique situation. Also, item three, the owner has tried to limit the size. He has two aircraft that we were trying to put in this hangar, and to get the very tightest, smallest scenario to get safely put the planes in, obviously, you know, planes have fuel in the wings, there's distances that they're supposed to stay apart. We, we met the size with the smallest hangar that we could, and, and that's why you can see that it's, it's set back from the back end of the house, trying to shrink it and still fit into the setbacks and not have any other issues that we did. So we kept it inside the setbacks and as small as it could to, to physically fit his two aircraft in there. And so with that, we believe that those criteria have been met. It's been determined by the board in the past that multiple hangers have also met that criteria with the same conditions in that area. So we feel that it does. What I, what I'd like Matt to do is come up and tell you a little bit about why the wind is an issue and vandalism in the area, and, and being a pilot, he can tell you a little bit more about the, why this is so important to, to have in this area.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks, Madam. Matt Harper, did you need me to state my name, spell it? Yeah, Matthew Clay Harper, M.A.T.T.H.E.W.C.L.A.Y.H.A.R.P.E.R.
Thank you.
We live at 941 Maho Circle. So if you think of Turnigan Arm, and when we get those big wind events that affect the entire town of Anchorage, Flying Crown airstrip is oriented, basically pointed right at the, the outflow from Turnigan Arm, right? So I have purpose, personally seen 90, 90 knot winds on the airstrip. I've seen a Super Cub flying in the, not my Super Cub, my neighbor's Super Cub, flying in the ropes. In the early 80s, there was three airplanes almost destroyed, a significant amount of damage done on the strip, so more and more folks are, are, you know, trying to put, put hangers up on the strip. There was the 2011 variance that was approved, that was later built in 2013, and then just three years ago, one of the R2, R2 zones house, zoned houses built, built a hangar. The other thing, and this has been, it's actually gotten better in the last year, but we had several airplanes broken into on a couple of evenings and a couple airplanes, about $25,000 worth of stuff, GPSs and sat phones and, and stuff like that, so the Muni's doing something right, because it's gone down here acutely, but, but we had a rash, we had a rash for a while there. Flying Crown is the oldest airpark in the state of Alaska. We're all proud to live down there. A lot of aviation-minded folks live in there. I have had overwhelming verbal, verbal support. I've been, you know, talking... I've been, you know, talking to my neighbors about this for several years and gotten overwhelming support. The way the geography of the lot is, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. The house sits up kind of high. There's only like three people that are going to be able to see the hangar and how we're planning to build it. We're planning to go flat roof with that purely just to minimize the, sort of, the impact of visibility from neighbors. So when the wind does, when we know the forecast wind is getting ready to come up, everybody drives their truck out on the airstrip and parks it in front of their airplane just as another sort of windbreak to protect their planes. That's all I have.
Additional?
No, we're good.
You're done. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Mr. Romerdal?
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair, I know the mention was of other hangers in the area. Is it not uncommon, I guess, for hangers to be built to accommodate two or multiple aircraft, more than one?
There are, yeah. The recent one, the recent one built in 2014 has space for two.
Thanks.
Any other questions by the board members to the applicant? Any questions of the applicant by the staff?
I have no questions for the applicant. I just want to make note that we had a total of nine public comments in support from the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none. Staff have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal.
Yes, the applicant, you have four minutes, 15 seconds.
All I'd like to say is, consider, it's a very unique, there's only two aircraft airstrips in Anchorage. It's a really unique type of thing. I don't think the variance language is conducive to this type of thing, but we felt like the board has found in the past that the wind is a characteristic and a safety feature, and we think that, we agree with that. We hope this board sees it the same way and allows him to have the same ability to have an aircraft hangar similar to many others that are in this airpark. So I appreciate your time and your effort and your understanding, and that we do feel like, we hope that you can also see that standard A, B, and C are met, and that you can offer us the approval of this variance. So I appreciate your time, and thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed. Matt arrests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Quinn, will you state your motion?
In case 2022-0039, I move to approve a variance from AMC 21-06, or dot 06 dot 020, Table 21 dot 06 dash 1, Table Dimensional Standards, residential districts to allow a single-family home and proposed attached aircraft hangar to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30%, subject to conditions 1 and 2, shown on page 6 of the staff report.
And Mr. Romerdal, second. Mr. Quinn, will you please speak to your motion?
I agree with the applicant, or I plan on supporting my motion. I agree with the applicant that in this situation, wind is a physical circumstance or extraordinary physical circumstance when it's approaching 100-plus miles an hour. That's more than enough wind to cause serious damage to an airplane. This is exactly what we saw several months ago when there was a big gust of wind in the Matsui, and a lot of planes there were heavily damaged. And I think it's important that the applicant be able to store his plane in a safe environment. For standard B, because these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. It's an aircraft subdivision, and planes are commonly enjoyed, and he can't enjoy his if it's damaged in a windstorm or by vandals. And for standard C, I think the special conditions are the size and location of the current home, which limits the applicant's ability to construct a structure for his aircraft. And I agree with staff's other findings for standards D, E, F, G, and H, and think that it's a reasonable request to increase the lot coverage from 30% to 39.7%.
Thank you. Mr. Romerdal?
Through the chair. So I agree with those comments. In addition, I guess I want to point out two things. One, you know, in standard A, even though the, there's not an extraordinary physical circumstance, I think there is an extraordinary circumstance in terms of it being unique and the fact that it's one, two aviation-oriented neighborhoods. So I think, you know, what the applicant's trying to do is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And then also, to my clarifying question, I think it's important to note, based on standard H, although it does increase the lot coverage beyond what is per code, the applicant's been thoughtful in his comments in trying to limit the amount that it goes over the maximum lot coverage. So the fact that it is the minimum variance to make it feasible to do what looks to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, I am supportive of the motion as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, seven positive votes, and the variance is approved. All right, which brings us to the last item on the agenda. And the petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage. So, what are we doing? Will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice given in this case?
Yes, Madam Chair. Staff presented the proposed ordinance to the Federation of Community Councils, the FCC, at their December 15th, 2021 meeting. There was no objections to the proposed fee update.
Thank you. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case 2022-16 is an ordinance to update the fee entitlement tables in the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations, AMCR. The current fee schedule was adopted in 2019 with language that was carried forward from a previous version of Title 21. This is mainly a housekeeping ordinance regarding titles and descriptions, increases in fees to account for the time requirements to fulfill entitlements, elimination of entitlements that are no longer used, and the addition of new fees for entitlements not previously accounted for in the fee schedule, and new entitlements with new fees. Your packets have details of these fee changes on pages 1 and 2. Page 4 has an estimated revenue increase for the 2022 budget due to these fee changes. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Romerdal?
Mostly through the chair. Mostly out of curiosity, on the first, the following titles and descriptions are being updated. Is there anything mechanically other than nomenclature on this first one changed from conditional use to special use, special land use permit for alcohol? Is that simply wording, or is there something mechanically that changes with procedure to apply and get approved for that?
Through the chair, Mr. Romerdal. So in the new update to the Title 21, prior to that, alcohol was a conditional use. It is now a special land use permit, so that was just changed, and it was never updated in the fee schedule.
Any other questions? Mr. Smythe?
Through the chair, is this memo to be accepted by the zoning board of examiners and appeals? Does this go to every other board also?
Through the chair, Mr. Smythe, yes. So ZIBA is the last board and commission to see this. We were actually supposed to, this was supposed to be heard in the March meeting, but we didn't have a full quorum, and so it was postponed to this meeting when we had a full quorum. But yes, so we will be, so staff will be seeking a resolution that will be approved at the next ZIBA meeting, and then it will go to the Anchorage Assembly. That's the last resolution that we're acquiring before going to the Assembly for approval.
Got it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I don't even know where we are. We presented the case, we asked the questions. There's no one in the audience.
Point of order, Madam Chair. You just need to open the public testimony and ask and then close.
So the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have some positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe, will you state your motion, please?
I intend to support my motion in case 2022-0016 to recommend the Anchorage Assembly approval of an ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations 21.20.002 and 21.20.003 and 21.20.007, update the fee schedule with the entitlements currently identified in Title 21.
Seconded by Mr. Romerdal. Mr. Smythe, will you speak to your motion?
I think the appropriate increase is because of cost. That's what I've heard consistently outside of this presentation also.
And Mr. Romerdal, anything?
Yeah, I also intend to support the motion and agree with previous comments.
Any other comments or discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, and that motion passes. And we recommend that the Anchorage Assembly approves this ordinance. Okay, well, we reordered the agenda, and next up is election of officers. And annual election of officers. Can I have a motion, please?
I, uh...
Mr. Smythe.
Ah ha, thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to present a motion that we nominate Member McKay as Chair, Member Hale as Vice Chair, and Member Quinn as parliamentarian.
Is there a second? Mr. Sabina, seconds? Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none, the motion passes. I'm Chair. Mr. Hale, who's in the Caribbean, is the Vice Chair. Mr. Quinn, I'm sure you're going to take that class on parliamentary procedure.
Yeah, I have a lot of studying to do, yes.
Okay, that's it. Any comments? Welcome to our new members, Mr. Myers, Mr. Flynn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Romerdal. Mr. Smythe, seconds, and we are adjourned.